And just so everyone's aware, in terms of timing, we're going to do these, then we're going to do governance for probably half an hour and then we'll take lunch break at 1:00. Okay?
So, we have an hour and a half to do these two OEs. I know that we will stay on point. We're going to keep the presentation to 15 or 20 minutes and give time for questions. And remember, we're looking for compliance with the measures and what we're looking for. You ready, Phyllis?
Good morning, everyone. And yes, happy birthday to Kristen wherever she is. So, this morning, we're, I'm sharing with you the HR operational expectations monitoring report. This report covers the period from November 1st of last year until October 31st of this year. In addition to just hitting some of the high points regarding recruitment, selection, retention, evaluation, staff treatment of our employees, and compensation, we also have in our operational expectations professional learning. You remember that last year, the board put the professional learning under HR as well. So, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna go through every page. I know you are going to be very sad about that as well, but I'm just going to hit some high points in each of the categories. If we'll go to page 3. Okay, and at the top of page 3, I'm going to give each measure and then talk a little bit about the measure, but not each one as well. Starting first with measure 1.1, as it relates to full-time teaching positions at the start of school. This year, we continue to see over a 99% fill rate in our teaching positions when schools opened. Moving on to 1 point, measure 1.4, teacher evaluation completion rate and school-based administrator evaluation completion rate. I want to call the board's attention to this year is the, or last year was the first year of the new school-based administrators evaluation program. This falls in line with state code and a state requirement that teachers now, principals and school administrators, as well as our superintendent, have a evaluation system that's in alignment, that counts with 40% of student achievement. If you take a look at the graph that's next to the 4, 1.4, the graph, that's next to 1.4 on the next page. We wanted to visually show you our completion rate of teachers and school-based administrators. You'll notice that teacher evaluation completion rate is at 96%. That is over 7,800 teachers who had a complete evaluation cycle last year. And our school-based administrator evaluation rate is over, at 92%, which is about 575 school-based administrators. Moving next to 1.5, I want to call the board's attention to the living wage comparison because I know that's been something that you have been interested in over time. I know you're interested in all of this, but this is something that we've talked about as well. Our living wage continues to be at 13, 13 per hour. And we are showing you in this graph, the comparison in 2009 to now. And you, we have made some progress in our reduction of employees that are meeting or working at the living wage. I would also share with you that if, in fact, we would have had our step increase in July instead of the delay, we would have had about 50 less custodians and food service workers. So, the red graph showing employees below the living wage would have further decreased if we would have implemented step in July. Moving now to measure 1.7. 1.7 shows our trends in diversity. We normally have just shown you this in numbers and percent, but we thought having a visual to go with it shows you our line. Our blue line is our school-based administrators. Our red line is our non-school-based administrators, coordinators, directors, managers, administrators. And our green line is our teacher diversity. And you can see that each set of groups that we're looking at, the trends have stayed pretty consistent. I would note that for teacher diversity, Fairfax is at 16.8, and the national rate for teacher diversity is 14.6. So, we're doing a little bit better than the national rate.
I'm sorry, can you just clarify, what's the blue line again?
I'm sorry?
What's the blue line?
The blue line, school-based administrators, principals, assistant principals, directors-
Okay, because, I mean, we're used to NSBA meaning something.
Yes, it is not the National School Board Association, and non-school-based administrators, coordinators, directors, managers, administrators. Moving on to item, measure item 1.8. I know you're particularly interested in our retention rate of teachers, and some years ago, we determined that you would also look at the bus drivers' retention rate. That was when we were having significant issues attracting and retaining bus drivers. You can see from the red bar that that has not been a recent issue, at least in the last five years, where we have been able to attract and retain bus drivers at a, you know, 94, 95% rate. If you look at the blue bar, you will note that our overall teacher retention rate has remained in the 90s. And we are happy to report that we're at a 93% overall retention rate of our teachers. And that's impressive to be able to retain teachers in spite of some of the changes that have, that the division has undergone. The related chart shows the retention rate of a five-year cohort. So, we were following teachers as they began their career with FCPS, and then looked at them five years later. Once again, we are above the national average in retaining teachers over five years. The national average for teachers in their first five years is 56%, and we're at 58%. And in each of the categories, you'll see that we're just slightly above the national average as it relates to teachers in their first year, second year, third year, fourth year. Also related to measure 1.8 is the exit survey. Two years ago, board members came to you with, and we had a discussion right around this table, about creating an exit survey to better learn why, in fact, people were leaving us, so we could better understand perhaps where we should put our efforts into. So, for the first time this year, we were actually able to launch the exit survey. We have surveyed and administered the survey to almost 1,800 folks who have left the division. We have a 23% response rate at this point. When you look at exit surveys nationally, they're somewhere between a 17 and 20% response rate. So, to have a 23% response rate is, we feel is pretty good, right out of the bat. The most significant category that people choose to indicate in why they have left FCPS is for personal reasons. We cite things such as salaries, facilities, safety. They actually align very much with our working condition survey in terms of why people would choose to leave. And the most frequently, of the respondents at a tw- ooh, at a tw- okay.
Some people don't have it.
Exactly. We're on exit, so perhaps he could make a nice exit strategy here, talking about exit survey. It's riveting data, isn't it? So, again, that's of the 23% of the respondents. The most frequent reason for leaving is for personal reasons. I'd like to now call your attention to 1.10, demonstrate positive trends in, it's not a chart, but just go up a little bit, Joanne. 1.10, it's on the same page.
Oh, I mean, you're going, say 1.13 at the top of the page goes, never, no, the other way.
And that is demonstrate positive trends in?
It's your page already.
Okay, it's all right. There we go, there we are, right. 1.10, demonstrate positive trends in support working conditions. So, for us, last year, I came to you with an estimate, I think it was like $78,000 if we were to launch a survey for support employees, doing some consideration. We talked about how to bring this in-house. A lot of this was support employees. We wanted to make sure was able to be translated into multiple languages, et cetera. We thought it was important to just do a little pilot first before we try to launch something. So, we are going to have a pilot this year, look at a department and a couple of different work groups around this, and so we'll be reporting back to you at a later date regarding this.
The timing on that is good, because, you know, this is not a year that we're implementing, you know, it's a rotating every other year. So, we'll be positioned to have a comprehensive evaluation then, the next year. So, the timing is really good.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing that detail, Dr. Garza. As it relates to 1.12, diversity, gender and ethnicity of participants in leadership programs, this is something else that I know the board has been particularly interested in. That information is in attachment to leadership program diversity report for the year. Now, moving on to the efficiency category, I'd like to start with 2.1, historical comparison of FCPS employees to HR staff ratio. This time last year, I shared with you that we would be reorganizing HR, moving from eight or nine smaller offices and units into four for better efficiency. I'm very pleased to introduce or reintroduce to you three, four of our directors. They are sitting right behind you, and they will be called upon to respond to specific questions. Let me first introduce Dee Holly Brown, who has been our Director of Benefits and has been with us for about 10 years now. We moved classification under benefits, so benef- in addition, because we really wanted to look at classification from a very strategic standpoint. So, Dee has benefits and classification. To her right, to her left, is Kevin Seals, our new Director of Equity and Employee Relations. That is a combination of what was previously Office of Equity and Compliance and Employee Performance and Development. And Kevin is brand-new to our division, and I probably this time last year was interviewing as, well, to the folks to his left. Michael Drager is our Director of Business Services. Michael has a number of small offices under him, salary, strategic communications, time and attendance reporting, our HR information system, et cetera. And then to Michael's left, Kathleen Crenshaw. A number of you have met and worked with Kathleen over this past year. She's our Director of Talent Acquisition and Management. That office is largely still the Office of Employment Services, but we really wanted to signify a change in how we think about our employee and our employee base. We really want to focus on acquiring talent and managing talent, not just processing employment as well. So, we congratulate them, and they have been doing a great job working through, in just 10 months, the reorganization of HR. Now, to the HR staffing ratios.
If you could stop right there, I just have to weigh in.
Absolutely, sure.
As you all know, we went through a full reorganization of the system at the highest levels, but Phyllis was already engaged in kind of a reorganization of HR and had been for some time. That's hard work, and I believe you did a great job with this, Dr. Pajardo. And furthermore, you did a great job in putting together this team. And I turned around, I was just kind of kidding with Kevin, it doesn't feel like he's new. But these, these folks did a great job on our behalf and, and under the very able leadership of Dr. Pajardo. So, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. It's kind of a happy anniversary for at least three of them as well, because they, this time last year, they were applying for the position. So, thank you so much for that comment. Now, as it relates to the staffing ratios in HR, you see pretty consistently, for four years, we were holding with about 131 full-time employees in HR. Like other departments, we had a budget cut last year, so we're down to 126.5 full-time employees in HR. By comparison to the number of employees in the division, has slightly increased over time. I would also ask you to consider this. While we've just put the number of benefit-eligible employees by our comparison here, and if you'll scroll down to the chart, to the bar graph, Joanne, because we thought the numbers didn't quite capture it. The very teeny bit of red that you see is the staff in HR by comparison to the employees. This chart does not include our 10,000 hourly employees that we still have to interact with. It does not include our, I think, almost 5,000 retirees who we have, more than 5,000, Dee is saying, more than 5,000 retirees that HR interacts with, our applicant pool that we also interact with. Right now, with the discontinuation of PLA and CCO, HR is going to be the smallest department, the head count, in the division. Smallest department as well. So, something for consideration. Again, you've asked questions around, you know, critical mass, what's the tipping point? We might be at a tipping point right now. All righty, folks, and I will skip the measures in customer satisfaction. There are a couple of attachments there regarding professional development that Sloan will be able to speak to, should you have questions regarding professional development. So, let's, let me hit a few high points from initiatives completed, and then I'll move to initiatives in progress, and then open it up for questions. As it relates to initiatives completed, we have them segmented according to the offices in HR. Just to highlight the extension of benefits to same-sex spouses, we were able to very quickly respond to the Fourth Circuit and offer that to employees right away during open enrollment. As it relates to business services, I'd like to call your attention to the first line, launch the Canexus Onboarding Application System process. This was a process improvement where we previously had new employees coming in for face-to-face orientation, where they learned about the division, where they completed their required training for FSLA harassment. We've now moved this all to an online system, so new employees can access this at any point in time. Now, moving to page 14, Equity and Employee Relations Initiatives Completed. I know, board members, you have a lot of faith and expectation regarding our communication and ongoing communication with employees. Our EER staff attended every employee organization meeting and every advisory meeting. We have over 22 advisory councils, and they have monthly meetings, and our staff have been there every single time, under the direction of Mr. Seals. He's forged good partnerships with our teacher associations. We have instituted regular meetings with the groups as well, where they were not instituted previously. As it relates to talent acquisition and management on page 15, we have established a talent acquisition and management minority group. It's a group of 41 educators looking very closely at our diversity, helping us better understand how we should recruit, how we should attract, how we should develop our minority teaching population. Most of the group is comprised of teachers. They've been meeting now with Tanisha Hollins, who's our recruiter, special project administrator, for a little less than a year now. As it relates to initiatives in progress, again, I'll just call your attention to just a few things under each of the main headings. Under benefits, if you look at the top of page 17, you heard me mention earlier that classification is now under benefits. We have taken the recommendation from the Gibson Report to really began to better streamline our job specs, our job specifications. As well as the Gibson Report indicated that we really should have a regular cycle of reviewing of job specification. So, that work is underway right now, under Dee's leadership. We are, I'll put a plug in now, we are looking for a coordinator for compensation, strategic compensation. That position has been open now, five months, Dee? This will be largely the work of that individual and the specialist that work with him or her. Under business services, I'd like to call your attention to two things on page 18. One is another process improvement, the online award submission. You might remember that this time last year, on the day that HR presented its operational expectation, there was a delay. You might remember also that our winter retirement ceremony last year was canceled due to snow. And a lot of people were braving the very poor winter that we had last year, bringing over their paper copy of their submission. Life and, you know, all for these wonderful employees that we have. We've now taken this and made this an online process, so they can access it from anywhere, they can submit it at any point in time, and we have some great things in place to move things along. I'd also like to bring to your attention the online evaluation pilot that we have with 55 schools. You know and heard that certainly teacher evaluation was quite cumbersome, so we've taken a lot of things and made them online. We've worked very closely with IT and our school principals and our teachers in 55 schools right now. Related to equity and employee relations and teacher evaluation, we have offered the second year in a row, a class on teacher research and connecting teacher research with teacher evaluation, because we want people to really think about the smarter goal that they have, and not just, did I meet it or did I not, what have, what am I truly learning about my students and my own teaching? Two more things, and then I'll turn it over to questions. As it relates to process improvements under talent acquisition and management, virtual interviewing. We have periodically and episodically had interviews via Skype, but we really want to be able to look more closely at our applicant pool. So, we have a tech assessment right now to, with a product regarding having virtual interviews, and we would do this in the initial stage of the application process. Then my last comment to you, I'm going to skip things in the issues and trends. My last comment to you as it relates to budget implications for future initiatives. Certainly, as we champion the premier workforce goal, we know that we're going to find areas for improvement in HR. Practices, policies, we know they need improvement, as well as we know that there will be technological solutions, as some of the things I've already recommended and told you that are underway. We have no idea what the budget implications will be as we try to make improvements to our processes as well. So, with that, we stand ready to answer your questions. And again, Sloan, in the area of professional development and any of the HR directors, I will always tee up the questions, and we'll take it from there.
Thank you. First, I'm going to have a motion from Patty.
I move to accept the Human Resources Operational Expectations Monitoring Report.
Do I have a second? Second by Pat. And the first one I have on my list is Elizabeth.
So, if we could go to 1.7, please. And I'm sorry, I'm going to be, I'm going to try to be efficient with our time today, because we ran a really good meeting this morning, and I want to keep us on schedule. So, 1.7, just, it was confusing for me, the acronyms, and I know that you all know, my suggestion would be on next steps or in the future, that acronyms be spelled out, particularly in the charts, because that drives, you know, where we're looking. And that didn't make any sense to me. For both 1.7 and 1.8, but I think it's a general question, is there an ability to put into these with, I would think, relative ease, raw numbers? Because I think sometimes the scope of, of these is difficult to ascertain when you're only talking percentages, spread across a big number of years. So, you know, I don't know if it's a separate table or just a reference point, but understanding where the impact is at the raw number level, I think, would help me tremendously. So, if you could slide forward to 1.8. Okay, so here, really, this is very significant, because if you want to look at what the raw numbers are, I mean, we're retaining 95%, but, you know, what the raw numbers are, I mean, I think would, would help us tremendously. And then a little further down on, down to the retention trends on 1.8, please. Okay, so, this, this is really kind of my first question. On the one hand, I think it's good news, and, you know, you're kind of pleased to see that we're, because there's all this talk sometimes, like, oh, we're losing teachers, we're losing teachers. But this shows a positive trend, at least in terms of the past, because the 2005 cohort, we had a 7% gain in retention to the 2009, and we're north of the, we're north of the average, or 4% gain from the cohort and 7% over the average, or something like that is what I looked at. But my concern is, and I don't see anything in here, and maybe we don't ask the right question, what is the cost associated with losing 38% of our employees within the first five years? And see, that's the big, you know, how much things cost and how much can be saved, it's, I feel like that's two sides of the same coin, and we don't tend to talk about that enough, is if you retain teachers within the first five years, for every, you know, 500 positions or 100 positions you retain, or 2% or 5% you retain, you know, you don't spend X amount. And I don't know if that's a follow-on question, if that's a thing for us to think about in the future, but, you know, the, the, the blue bar on five years at 62% is good news, except you don't see, there's an invisible bar at 38%, and that's the workload. The workload isn't the 62% who stayed, it's the 38% who left. And further down, if you could slide to page 13, please. All I know is page 13. On exit survey. Yeah, so the third, the third one down. Only 23% of those who were invited took an exit survey. And I'm wondering if you might be able to speak to that, because the 23%, I don't know if that's 23% of that 38%, but it's a little bit hard to tell. And now, the 89% of the 23% said they were extremely satisfied. So, those are the people who are probably leaving for personal reasons, husband got a job someplace else, wife got a job someplace else, you know, had a baby, you know, whatever it is. So, those are the people who are inclined to answer the survey in the first place, I think, but I don't know. But all the people who didn't answer are the people who are costing us the money by leaving, and so now we don't know why. Is that, is that a fair assumption?
So, let, you've said several things, so let me try to, let me try to address a few of them.
Really?
So, first, in terms of the raw numbers, I can definitely appreciate that. I know from the workforce diversity trends in 1.7, I do have raw numbers in terms of that. For example, the 24% of our school-based administrators, that represents 161 folks. For the 20.2% of non-school-based administrators, that represents 113 employees. And for the 16.8% of teachers, it represents 2,512.
That's why it's important. 100 versus thousands. That's why that's a- That's why that's a significant figure, and that's why I asked.
So we, so we certainly can, in future operational expectations, or, you know, if you want to see the raw numbers, we can have that.
Do you have a sense why we were only able to get twenty-three percent of people to take an exit survey?
So as it relates to the exit survey, there are a couple of things. One, this is the first time that we're doing such as this, all righty? So we're learning as we're going along. The one thing that we have began to do is, upon exiting, as soon as people, we know they're leaving, they're actually sent a communication that says, in the near future, you're going to receive. We had not done that initially, because people can look at how many things, Dee? I certainly deleted a few surveys. I was asked to take, I did look if I was supposed to respond for the division, but, you know, people are constantly asking you to, you know, stores that you shop in, et cetera. So people can delete them just because they're not interested. We thought it was important to first notify folks that we are going to ask you for your opinion later. So that's an improvement that we've made. So that's an expectation that should increase. As well as when we looked at the national response in terms of exit surveys, it was somewhere around twenty percent. So to be at a pilot stage and already having twenty-three percent of our respondents, we're actually feeling pretty good.
I'm wondering if something like, you know, a ninety or a hundred-and-eighty-day follow-up, like, if people are leaving, and it's sensitive, and they don't feel like answering it, that maybe ninety days down the road, they might be more willing, once they're separated, to have that.
It's actually four, Michael, correct, four weeks? How, how long after folks leave do we, I know we notified, that's right, speaking to the microphone. Michael Drager, Business Services, knows more details than me.
When we did the research, what we found was that if you, if they are gone, it's much harder to catch them. So we will be catching them actually before they leave the district, and a lot of times we do have notification that, you know, they've submitted their retirement paperwork, or their separation paperwork, usually a few weeks in advance. So we are trying to catch them before they leave the district, and we feel that that will give us a better response rate going forward.
Because, you know, if you, if, and to my colleagues, the reason why I'm, I'm so focused on this is because by the time you've had an employee for five years, all of your investment, you know, your emotional investment, your, your resource investment, your professional development investment, that, they're ready to take off, and so if we lose them in that first five years, the majority of what we've invested in ramping them up for a career with FCPS is then, you know, decimated. And we're going to spend that same amount, you know, bringing back somebody else up to speed. And so, you know, what we, whatever we can do to mitigate that is, you know, is a cost avoidance that saves us money in the long run.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, I have one last question, and it's, and it's brief. On page eight, top of page fifteen. Back up a little bit. Okay. So in that first one, the middle sentence on the right-hand side, "Performance standards, key elements, and matrices were created for thirteen groups of instructional resource professionals." I don't know what that means, I don't like how it sounds, because it sounds to me like performance standards were created differently for different groups of professionals. Can you speak to that?
Yes, certainly. So those folks that are in those thirteen groups would say to you, by nature of them still being on teacher contract, the work that they do is very different than a classroom teacher. A counselor would say that, an instructional coach would say that, a reading teacher would say that. And so we worked with those individual groups. They still have the forty percent weight, consistent with other teachers and administrators, but they did, through their associations and advocacy groups, et cetera, we actually streamlined things for them, to be able to have specific things, as it relates to a reading teacher, as it relates to a counselor, different than a classroom teacher.
I think, I think the way you just said it needs to appear in that document, because it sounds like for, for different teacher categories, different performance standards were created, and really, what I think I'm hearing, I'm not going to put words in your mouth, is that you made their performance evaluations relevant to their specific professional capacities.
I, I think that's refer, I think that's referenced in the first sentence. I don't know if it needs to be refined, but the first sentence references that.
I'm just saying.
Okay. I'm going to move us on. I have Pat, then Janie, then Sandy.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All really great, helpful information. I have a few questions, so maybe what I'll do is just fire them all at you, and you can answer, okay? Save time, I hope. On teacher evaluation, are, do we know whether we're doing more than Virginia requires? Because that's one of the questions I get from teachers out there. Are we asking teachers and administrators to do more than the state law actually requires? So that's question one. Second, on diversity, when I look at 1.7, it looks like our goal is to make progress, but I'm wondering if we have a more specific goal on that, and I, and the plan for that looks like this advisory group, which is great, and to monitor, which is great, but I wonder if we have sort of a timeline and measures on that. Cultural competency training, do we have a goal for that? I didn't see it, and maybe it's in there. And then where are we on that goal? On workload, obviously continues to be an issue. We've provided a lot of extra time, but it's still an issue. So just wondering if, if you can add anything to our thinking about how the school board might be able to help on workload. And then, that's it. Thank you.
All right, all righty. Thank you. So let me, let me go for it. So in terms of teacher evaluation and requiring more than VDOE is, has told us to, you know, in the eyes of the person that that's happening to. So each year I have to certify with VDOE that the state requirements are being met, the standards are there, the ratings are there, the forty percent is there. We rejected VDOE's look at only SOL data. So if we wouldn't have rejected that, we wouldn't have SMARTER goal. So by rejecting something that says, we're only going to look at performance data of SOL, perhaps we did increase the workload for teachers in that, but I, I, I think the board is with me. And not I think, I know the board is with me in terms of challenging us to think beyond performance assessments of SOLs. They are needed, we report on them, we expect our students to meet benchmarks in that area. So yes, by doing something different, it, it makes it more personal to the individual teacher, as opposed to having a set of data, sometimes which they can control, which they can't control. So I guess the answer is yes, simply. As it relates to the diversity, there is no specific measure. We have never set a target. It has only been progressive trends. It's difficult to, for me, to understand what would be an acceptable measure, and what is progressive? Is one, changing one percent progressive? So there is no specific goal and measure set. The Gibson report did indicate to HR, in some of the measures, there were no goals, and so that we needed to develop them. Certainly, as we move to premier workforce, I think there's some opportunity for us to, you know, state some reasonable expectations of changes. As it relates to cultural competence, Sloan, and just actually just having the Closing the Gap work group, do we have a particular goal around cultural competence and sharing that with all of our employees? If not, come on up to the table.
Good morning. The, the brief answer to that question is, no, we don't have a specific target set at this time. We initiated training for cultural proficiency, not competency, last year as part of our Closing the Achievement Gap work, and we're continuing that work this year. But we really have not identified any specific targeted funding, or any specific targeted goals for that particular component of our Closing the Achievement Gap project work.
You recall, in some of the preliminary strategic planning work, that that is reflected in there. So I think at some point down the road, and I sense from feedback we've gotten from board members, that that's the right direction. So I don't want to get ahead of the board, but I sense at some point in the near future, that, that would be reflected in our strategic plan, we would certainly have to develop a phased model to ensure that we touch every employee. But, but, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Presidio, but those schools that have piloted that training, we've gotten very, very positive responses. So I think that your team has done a great job in developing those materials and that training. So I sense that's in line with what you've heard.
Yeah, that's correct. The, the schools that we've worked with are, are deeply embedded in the work, it's part of their school culture, as they think about how to form positive relationships with their students, and it's been very well received. We actually have requests from many more schools than we're able to serve at this point in time, so.
Thank you. And certainly, as it relates to workload, I think workload is an issue that will continue for employees, for our instructional employees and our support employees. One thing, as we have made cuts in staff, you know, less people doing, if not the same, more work, that's a workload issue. This yin and yang of initiatives that take on different aspects of how we do things differently, there's that tension, a very acceptable tension, when you do new things. You have to learn new behaviors and new practices. So that is, I think, as a learning organization, we probably may never totally tackle workload just because of the continued learning of new things as well.
Okay. I'm going to keep us moving. I have Janie, then Sandy, then Illyon.
Okay, great. I'm, there, some of the questions that aren't even asked, just sort of touched on where, where I would like to go. First of all, the, Elizabeth's bringing up the, sort of the investment in teacher preparation. We know that we need to change the conversation on investment in human capital and infrastructure, all the rest of it. Larry Summers had a very interesting piece this morning, again, on the need to invest for the future. Investing in teachers, training, et cetera. There have been national studies that have talked about the five-year investment in teachers, because we know it takes at least five years to get their feet under them. There are national numbers out there, it would be cool if we can extrapolate that for ourselves, because that, that is part of investing in human capital. Deloitte, that invests in MBA in their employees, probably has a better retention, by the way, because of what they do, and that's, you know, long-term debate over the years. Just-in-time hiring for millennials is probably not the way to go, and, you know, the whole issue on teacher preparation, but I think we have an opportunity to, again, change the conversation, get ahead of the curve, and look at best practice in the business community, which is beginning to look at that investment, because if you can retain them, at least in the profession, you save money over time, which Elizabeth was talking about. Okay. The whole SMART goals thing, and as we get longer into develop, I was very pleased to see that you looked at the particular employee categories where they don't have SOL. So I guess my next question is, classroom teachers, where there are not SOLs, and I know that was part of the issue, how do we develop assessment pieces? So, and as we are pushing the state to look at other assessment and workload, how are we doing with non-SOL teachers? And, because I know initially we had this huge SMART goal, I don't know, thirty-seven cells that you had to develop data on, and it was taking them longer just to do that than to actually develop grades. So if you could just respond very quickly to that one.
Okay, and I'm, I'm just going to throw out a little reminder, we have a, we have a tendency to dig so deep sometimes here. And remember, we're getting the report, we're looking at compliance, have we met?
Right. But it's a workload.
I understand, so I want to keep.
Real quick response.
A little more high level, okay?
Yes. Yes, we're looking at it.
We're looking at it, and, because I was, because in, again, on that page fifteen, so with classroom teachers who also are in the non-SOL category, do we have any way of knowing how we're doing with that?
So all teachers still are required, and all administrators still are required, to set a SMARTER goal. By an individual setting a SMARTER goal, they can have more control over what it is that they look at, whether it is their own performance assessment that a teacher makes, whether it's a performance, I'm just saying in terms of performance assessment, an assessment that a English nine team can together create, as well as a performance that they require a student, maybe a music teacher is going to require a student to sing a certain song that has certain beats in.
Right. So we're able to pull back a little bit to make it a little more reasonable for everybody?
Yes, as well as that piece on the teacher evalu, connecting teacher evaluation with teacher research. In that classroom, in that course, we've had classroom teachers, librarians, coaches in there, to have, have us, help us really think beyond the SMARTER goal itself.
Because I know that, but it was an issue in the first year. Last question, hiring world language teachers for our, our dual language, we have difficulty getting teachers that are certified according to the state, as well as in the language, and so partnerships with colleges, and where are we with that? Because I've, I have a school that couldn't go forward with something we had, we had.
So our world, critical needs area for us is still teachers of English of speakers of, of other languages, as well as world language teachers. We have made some requests to VDOE in terms of acceptance of certain licensure pieces as well. It's a work in progress.
Yeah. So do we have an active partnership with George Mason, or?
We do not have a specific partnership as it relates to world languages. We have partnerships around special education, but not specifically around world languages, but that's something we can certainly look into.
Because we'll never get these elementary guys going if we don't.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy, Illyon, then Patty.
Thank you. I have a couple of, a couple of comments and just a couple of questions as well. First of all, thank you for this report. I was very pleased to see the reduction in the number of our employees below the, the living wage, and particularly the, the reduction in the custodial staff that's below that. So of course, I, I hope there comes a time when we get to zero, of course, and it, but it looks like we're on our way, so that's, that's excellent news. Congratulations on the retention rate being significantly higher than the, the national rate, and I think that's, that's a good gauge of, of where we are. Two, two questions, and then one more comment, which is, on page seven, you referred to, and we've, we've known this was happening, the Health Diagnostic and Developmental Corporation working with fifteen schools. At what point will we have some sort of an indication of if that's been an effective tool, and how, are we, are we working on measuring it? Will it be working condition survey to working condition survey? Is that our measure, or something else?
So as it relates to organization health and development, actually, I have a synopsis of some activities to report to the superintendent, so I'm sure in turn she will report that to you all as well. It, because it still is new, it, there's individual attention to the fifteen schools, with their teams, with their principals as well. I know that we have gauged some, we've done some post-surveys with participants who have been a part of that. It's been very favorable in terms of, thank you for helping us to build trust, to start conversations that have not been had in the past.
And do we have timing on that? When, when we expect to see the results? I mean, will it be this spring? Is that when we can expect to see that?
I'm sure you're, you have a timeline for, there will be an actual, there has to be the assessment administered again, so that we can measure and gauge improvement. And from that point, I don't know what your timeline is for that second component, but that's, that's the real opportunity to see, have we improved?
Okay. And on page seventeen, with the benefits, the medical and dental benefits for parent liaisons, there's a reference to in calendar year 2016, that those, it's going to change to thirty-plus hours? Is that to say that some of our parent liaisons would lose benefits if we don't do something?
So as it relates to the thirty hours, I know that is in line with the Affordable Care Act. We actually have been more generous in terms of extending the benefits to our, our parent liaisons and certain other employees as well.
But what's then the reference to calendar year 2016? I mean, I'm trying to figure out if we're. out if we're, it's on 17 in the report. I mean, it looks to me like we're saying that some of our parent liaisons would lose benefits, but I'm not sure if I'm reading that properly.
Because it references 20-plus hours, and then it says in calendar year 2016, it's going to 30-plus hours.
Right, exactly.
Sorry, not routine for me. So several years ago, we offered benefits to parent liaisons who reached that threshold, who were providing services at at least 20 hours average over the course of the school year.
Okay.
With the Affordable Care Act, we are changing that to 30, and yes, there are some people who will lose eligibility. This year, if we ran the numbers, which we did, relative to that eligibility, and extrapolated them out to next year, it was a loss of seven headcount that would change benefit eligibility.
Seven parent liaisons would lose benefits?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Call benefits, yes.
But it's in our control to continue benefits for those seven if we wanted to, correct?
Well, we could do so. However, it would be most appropriate to provide benefits at a 20-hour level for all of our employees if we were doing that. We had made an exception as a pilot group to see how we could handle and run reports for Affordable Care Act. Based on the Affordable Care Act and compliance advice, we've quite honestly developed how we are going to be able to be in compliance. At the time that we had envisioned using this pilot group, we thought we were going to be using a 20-hour threshold, and that's why we did that.
Okay.
Now the threshold is 30 hours, and we've moved into compliance.
Okay. Well, I, my own advocacy is, I believe that our parent liaison should be full-time or part-time employees, contracted employees, and, you know, that's been my advocacy and will continue to be my advocacy, which I gather would take care of the benefits issues, correct? If they were transitioned to being-
If they became FTEs, yes.
Yes. So that's actually my overall advocacy, but if we don't go in that direction, I would hope that we would not have any parent liaisons losing benefits. And just one last comment, I just note on one of the attachments that the, our, when we compare our teacher salaries, that it makes a significant difference when we add in benefits, as far as, you know, how they compare locally, and I think that's a message that we certainly need to be getting out there to our employees. So thank you.
Absolutely. We're developing a strategy around that, because we actually agree with you. The overall benefit from working in FCPS, I will tell you, though, it still doesn't take away the fact that we've got to improve our teacher salaries. I think we'd jump up three spots if we add benefits into the WABE comparisons. So I agree with you, but we're still not where we need to be with teacher salaries, but we do need to do a better job of educating our employees. I think it would help us retain many more down the road as they look at other surrounding school systems, so.
Absolutely, and I couldn't agree with you more about needing to increase the compensation. So that comment was not intended to say anything other than, we do need to do that, but we also need to, yeah, thank you.
Illyon, and then Patty.
Well, thank you. My first question goes to Excess Survey. I understand that a 23% of those separated from FCPS responded to the survey, and 89% of them indicated that they were satisfied and extremely satisfied, which means, do I assume that the other 11% indicated that they were not satisfied?
Some combination of any of the other, it's a Likert scale that we ask folks to respond to by, hang on.
I just want to know, among those who indicated that they were not satisfied, or dissatisfied, or extremely dissatisfied, if they were the scale, whether there is a way for us to let us know, what were major reasons, if they were given an opportunity to actually describe the reasons for their dissatisfaction?
So the question specifically, how would you rate your overall experience as an FCPS employee? Extremely satisfied, satisfied, dissatisfied, extremely dissatisfied. It's the four-point scale. And then specifically, when we're asking them for the factors that contributed to them exiting FCPS, some of the factors which they can indicate, clean and well-maintained facilities, support from school leadership, collegial atmosphere among staff, teaching assignments for the instructional folks, all of these line up with categories in our working conditions survey as well. So those are just some of the particulars in the survey.
So is what you're asking, Illyon, for those people that weren't satisfied, what was the main reason?
Basically, whether there's a way for us to let us know, so that if there's anything bold feels that we should work on, we could develop a policy or.
So by responding to what are the factors that made you exit FCPS, it does give us an indication of areas for improvement and areas to work in. At least I would make that assertion.
Is there a place where our board members can go to see what those things were, they indicated?
We can certainly make the results available to you, it's just a matter of-
Thank you very much, since we are pressed for the time, then let me go to the next and the final question, Mrs. Smith. That has to do with attachment number two, attachment number two, my favorite chart attachment. I understand that we have made progress in terms of diversity for both instructional and support staff, but I see that, I see that. But at the same time, you know, where I'm going with this, this does not reflect the diversity of the community or student population.
Right.
Even having said that, I am trying to compare the staff diversity versus, let's say, the teacher diversity versus the leadership diversity. The leadership diversity, I'm just looking at very crudely, the numbers at the bottom, percentage at the bottom does not, for Asians and Hispanic, are even lower than the percentage of teacher, teachers in the school system. Is that, could you tell us why they may be lagging behind even the diversity or lack thereof of the teaching forces?
So certainly, these are all assertions that I am making here. This is not, this is not my dissertation, so I have not conducted the official research on this. The first thing that I would report is related to these programs. These programs are offered to all employees, offered, okay? They're voluntary programs. They are raise your hand, they are also submitted an application and be interviewed. So if we took an approach that actually was more of not volunteer, but to say, we are going to select people and put them into the programs, that would be one way to manage the numbers better, okay? We're making the choice of who goes into the program versus employees saying, I want to access this. So that would be one way to make those changes. But for right now, they're, with few exceptions, they are, if you are interested, you may participate, and you go through a selection process.
I would love to engage in offline conversation with you a little more on this one, not today, but thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Smith.
Patty, then Dan.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Pejardo, for this very thorough report and all the attachments. There is so much information here that I really, my first comment is, my gosh, this must have taken a lot of time to put together. And I hope as a board, we can talk about that at the appropriate time to really maybe identify a subset of the information that's really critical, because I'm very concerned about your workload. You mentioned that you're the smallest organization within FCPS, and it occurs to me that you're trying to do a lot, and you're trying to do it all well. And so I'm wondering whether or not you need direction from the board that would allow you to focus, for example, retention. Some of my colleagues have talked about the costs associated with having to rehire and retrain. So my question, I guess, is, do you have or do you need from the board a sense for?
Okay, I'm gonna jump in on this one, because I really think that's more a governance discussion. And the other piece I think that's awkward for us this time is that we're working towards a strategic plan, and we kind of don't know where those pieces are going to align together. So if you could hold that for governance, that would be great, Patty.
Okay, 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 very good. So that is an issue that I'm hoping that we can refer to a governance discussion, because I feel like we need to give you some air cover in terms of what your true priority should be. In my view, it's the retention strategy. And I also wondered about your hiring practices, whether or not you've been able to or have a desire to streamline and tailor them. We've heard from some of the staff out in the schools about ESOW and special ed in particular, that it's very difficult to find and hire those folks. We've heard from the teachers about the high school start time issue, that they also might like, you know, some kind of a special tailored process. So I guess my question is, do we have anything like that in the works? If you can, that's more of a yes or no, I think.
Yeah, yeah. So as part of the strategic plan, as Ms. Smith said, and I know Dr. Garza could comment on this if she desires to, we, looking at our hiring practices is part of that as well. We want to be able to do things that get us closer to applicants. We have a number of applicants that we'd never take a look at. Gallup has done some research with us and have told us some things about our applicant pool, which we should have had a hunch about, but like 66% of our applicant pool in terms of teachers are right from Virginia. They're regional. They're either from Virginia, Pennsylvania, West Virginia, all of our surroundings. So as well as we have strong applicants internal to FCPS, they've student taught here, they've lived here, they've graduated from our division, they've gone off to college and come back. So we definitely have some thoughts around being able to tap into those regional folks which we hire and who do very well with us and who stay with us.
Very good. Did you want to comment, Dr. Garza?
Very briefly, I'm also thoughtful about how much, where we are on time, but, so I'd love to engage on all this. This is important stuff. On the HR processes and just staffing, we have a whole list of kind of HR things that we're wanting to work on. It's not because our team's not doing a great job, they're doing a great job. It's just, you know, what can we do to better optimize some of these? Staffing is one of the first ones we're gonna look at in terms of the staffing process. How can we be more nimble? How can we create conditions? This is just one piece of it. We do offer some advanced contracts.
Early hire.
Yeah, early hire contracts. We're looking at that. But in terms of just the overall staffing process, how can we, you know, arm our principals and get them in a position where they can quickly hire someone when they identify that person? So there's lots of pieces of that we're looking at.
Thank you. And another question that I think is hopefully straightforward, on page four, we have the folks under the living wage. Why is it like that, and what would we need to do to remedy that situation? Is that a pay scale issue? I mean, could you go in and just change the pay scale on particular employees? Is that what it would take?
It would take that, but that's also funding. It's the, you know, what would be our priority around this as it relates to any of the other groups of employees as well, so.
As you all know, we could solve a lot of problems throughout the system if we had, if we were funded appropriately, and this is a place where obviously it's driven by dollars.
Yes, I was hoping you'd say that, just to make it very obvious. Yes. Thank you, Dr. Garza. So I'm finished.
Thank you, Patty. Dan?
Thank you. First question, regional market comparison, where, what's the source of that data? And is that internal? Is there, there's a broader, is it WABE? What's the view?
So our regional market comparison is actually, actually a look back, because it looks at last year's, remember our reporting period for this? The WABE guide was actually produced and publicized after we had this. We do want to, for future years, do some things that line up a little bit better with the WABE guide.
So it is a WABE guide data that you're using for each of the position?
We can look at-
Classifications?
We look at information from our counterparts. We go directly to them, Lauten, Prince William, et cetera.
So local school average means basically the WABE folks, and then trying to get additional detail that you need to get to be able to put together the market class, the regional market classification?
Correct.
And the differentials that I see, I have to admit, I don't know if I've looked at this as carefully in the past or not, but there's some significant differentials between positions. You know, assistant principals, you know, actually start, I think, one of them starts high and the other goes low and vice versa. And I realize it's easier to solve when you have more money and you can just kind of even that out, but is that some kind of something we've done over the years, or is that how the markets changed around us? Any sense of what, where that's from?
So in some cases, it's been because of some individuals, some of the groups that we've talked about have been on different lengths of contracts. So not all assistant principals across the region work the same contract.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And even in the case of principals, for example, all of our principals are on a 12-month contract and work year-round. That's not the case in other regions as well.
And we've changed some of that the last four or five years. We've reduced that for-
Absolutely. And hours worked, I believe. Lauten went to an eight-hour day for teachers versus ours has still been on the seven and a half. So those are all of the subtle pieces, number of days in a contract, number of hours worked as well.
So getting to the, kind of, the heart of the issue for me is that we, this doesn't, the regional market comparison identifies the things you talk about, doesn't include benefits. It's just strictly dollar-for-dollar. And we use, we talk about living wage, and this is an issue that I've been very focused on for many years, but when I asked deeper questions about this six or seven years ago, I got an unclear answer, and I guess I'll ask it again, and maybe it's clearer now.
Oh, you're setting me up here. You want a clear answer?
So, the issue is, the living wage is a living wage, but it frankly doesn't mean a lot if you don't have some kind of benefit, living benefit amount. And that's, so the wage itself, we could have a much higher wage for any position that we choose to have if we don't offer any healthcare benefits. So at 20 hours, you know, a pop, you know, a week, you know, you don't offer health benefits, we can bump up that living wage and do great, but that doesn't really take care of some key parts of our population. So I'm, that part of it makes me very nervous, even though I'm deeply supportive of a living wage concept. So changing our minimum threshold to 30 hours from 20 hours, to me, is not something that I'm very supportive of, even though I know that that's a significant increase in cost. So I know that that's our trade-off right now, and I get that, that we're making some tough trade-offs here, because when you're not, you don't have sufficient funds, you gotta do that. But one of the key issues that I've always heard is our cafeteria workers. One of the reasons that we have such long-term stability there is that we offered healthcare benefits to those folks at 20 hours a week. And so if we're changing that, and that's kind of my question, is, are we in fact changing that for them in addition to, obviously, parent liaisons and others? And what does that mean for retention? Because it's gonna have a significant impact.
Well, certainly, we would be, and Dee will come on up, we are making those changes for any of our folks that are in that hourly capacity, different than a few years ago. We do have Affordable Care, and we have to be in compliance with that as well. So you have, I do think it's going to impact retention of employees. If I think back to my days as a teacher and as a school-based administrator, oftentimes, my dining room assistant was a parent who was in the building. So you do have people who always want to work and do just a little bit of something, because they're coming up, you know, volunteering anyway as well. I believe the piece, do we string some things together? My dining room assistant was also my parent liaison when I was a school administrator, and I think people continue to string a couple of things together. But yes, could it impact retention? Absolutely.
Well, I also think it can have a positive impact on retention, because now, I mean, I don't, I'm sorry, I had to walk, step out a second and come back in, so that may have been where you were going, I'm not sure. But this is a lot more employees now that will be provided, part-time employees, that will now be provided the opportunity for health benefits. I think to the tune of well over $6 million was one of our projections at one point, of additional cost to us to be compliant with-
We've always done that for cafeteria workers.
I'm sorry?
It's always been provided for what our cafeteria workers have gotten. In fact, that's, I have people in the restaurant industry, and they used to tell me that our costs are higher than what they would incur, because we've always had, while we paid, you know, we have a lower kind of number of hours that people offered, but they get the health benefits that keeps folks there for the long term, even if the wage isn't maybe as competitive. In this case, I think we do both reasonably well. But we're talking about changing that formulation, because I gotta believe most of our cafeteria workers are part-time folks, you know, less than 30 hours a week.
And Dee, maybe you can elaborate on this, but to transition from wherever, whatever we've been doing in the past, to be compliant with the Affordable Care Act for part-time employees, it was a, I think, well over $6 million it was going to cost us in additional revenue. So Dee, did you touch on that?
Okay, so the Affordable-
Okay, so the Affordable Care Act is pretty complex. In a nutshell, there is a marriage between the type of employee the person is. Under the Affordable Care Act, this scoops in all of those hourly folks, it's not just the contracted folks, so there's a distinction. So, exactly. Substitute teachers, the definition of a coach, you know, there are folks that provide coaching services for us that are not normal employees or teachers that are already in the building, et cetera. And the ACA attempted to define what we should be doing relative to those, dare I say seasonal workers, okay? And it came up with a formula. That formula is highly complex because it's different based on not just the number of hours that the individual works, but also the frequency of the work, et cetera. So historically, we had provided benefits to cafeteria workers who were in fact established employees, they weren't hourly employees, at a rate of 15 hours per week, and that made them eligible. When we moved into looking at compliance for the Affordable Care Act, we looked at the parent liaison group because we recognized that there were long-term employees who had access to, or wanted access to health benefits, and we used them as a pilot group in order to grow our knowledge and provide them benefits over that time. There's another way to provide those benefits as well as recognize them to, as contracted individuals, so that, there are a number of different ways to solve this particular challenge. It's, we need to have that conversation about what we can absorb from a budgetary standpoint.
And I'm not trying to be prescriptive, I, that's clear, because I know that we have obviously severe cost constraints and, and there's ways to, to provide health insurance through the Affordable Care Act that maybe is beneficial to us, you know, as an institution that not only maybe transfer some of that cost, I realize we have minimum standards, but the minimum is, as you've said, is 30 hours, it's not 20 hours or 15 hours and, and so that's, so I, I realize it's a bigger conversation, but I, but I, I think, I think I want to know, I want to understand better the trade-offs that we're making institutionally as a result of this, even though I recognize that this is something I'm expecting the superintendent to do, but I want to understand as a board member what those trade-offs are. So that's the next step, yes.
Okay. I don't know how best to put it, but I think that we need to do something about having follow-on information to the board about employee benefits. Ryan?
Yeah, I, I would agree with the conversation here, but I think, for me, I think what Dee just cleared up is the fact that 30 hours seemed arbitrary to me originally, but I think she helped explain why that's the marker, because, for example, my day job, 24 hours is the cutoff, so you know, it's, every place is different. Real quick question on the, you, you mentioned that ESOL and World Language are now considered critical needs. Does that mean those positions are, receive incentives now to bring them in or?
I would love to be able to report that yes, we offer incentives to folks in our critical needs, and that probably is something going forward, because any teacher that's a special education teacher, that is a higher level math teacher, that's a higher level science teacher, they have choices. We do want to get out in front this year and offer more early contracts to critical needs areas, not with more money, but with a guarantee of you will have a position in FCPS, but at this point, it does not come with any additional funds.
Okay. And then finally, I would just agree with Mr. Moon's perennial point about our leadership diversity, we have to solve that.
Okay, so I appreciate the discussion about the, no, I'm not going to do any go-banks. Ryan now has less than 15 minutes to do the next one, so we can do emails to staff for any follow-ups. I think the, the employee benefit issue is something that the board needs to understand, and it's always that balance between wanting to take care of the individual, being able to afford what you can as an organization. So I have an understanding for where we're going for the 30 hours, but that'll be a good follow-on.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to call for the next steps. I have, yes, we're going to vote, I just wanted to see the next steps before we voted. Is that okay? I've got her working over there. I think the one thing that Elizabeth said is really a given, that we're going to have acronyms spelled out in reports and where we can, putting the raw numbers.
Got that.
We can put that down there, but I think that's just a given in all the reports we get.
Cost of turnover was one I had down as well.
Yes.
Are, are there some ways to equate or quantify?
Right. And then I had information about the results of the exit survey.
Yes, I got that too.
And then the employee benefits piece. So if we, if, if we're fine with those, maybe, I don't know if you have it ready, but will we?
Well, I think we need to see them.
Okay.
Could I ask just a question about what we're asking for next steps on employee benefits?
That the superintendent would provide, and Pam's going to bring it up, but information to the board about employee benefits related to length of contract, that's what I was thinking the board was concerned about.
Part-time employees and the Affordable Care Act.
And hourly employees.
Okay, well, part-time, hourly are kind of the same, for us, kind of the same thing.
And then as, as part of that, does it make sense to get just a little summary of what options are available to those employees under the Affordable Care Act in the exchanges? I mean, outside of us, so we know what, what it is? I'm sorry, so do you? Dan, did you say yes, we ought to get that, or no?
I, I think there's trade-offs. I think ought to be part of the report is what the trade-offs are, because we, we need to understand that what decisions are being made and what people's options are.
Yeah, so I'd like to sort of, if we can summarize what's available to employees if we don't provide health insurance for them. Sure, where they can go for health insurance other than us.
Kathy? I'm sorry.
Yes, Elizabeth?
On the go-back on this living wage comparison, what I was going to ask for in our next step is, there are plenty of, of food service workers, you know, which, we keep talking about living wage, but there's some people that are doing it for extra spending money, they only want to work when the kids are in school, so a living wage to be earned within four hours is not, I mean, it.
You know, I think we'll have to get the information and then whatever the board says about it then, but if the board wants the information, then we'll have a more detailed discussion about that then. I totally understand what you're saying. Okay, do we? Okay. Okay, so we have requests to provide numbers in addition to percentages when we're reporting data in future monitoring reports. The acronym parts too, we wanted. Spell out acronyms. Provide additional information about employee benefits related to position, length of contract and hours worked, include what benefits are available under the Affordable Care Act. Sandy?
Well, I, I think it's actually narrower than that and more specific than that. I, I think, you know, we're, what we're looking for here is benefits related to, particularly to hourly workers, correct?
Right.
Well, hourly and, and coaches, I mean, we need, given that is all part of the package.
So I'm going to ask the superintendent, because it says position, length of contract and hours worked, doesn't that include everything you're saying?
I think it's broader than what we're saying, because, you know, we don't need it for everybody, you know, I don't think we don't need.
I think you're only asking for part-time.
Right.
Part-time, hourly positions.
Okay.
Which is the only place where there's really significant change.
Okay, so for part-time, hourly instead of length of contract.
Yeah, part-time, hourly positions.
Okay.
And then Kathy, I don't know if this needs to be captured here or not, but the report on effectiveness on the, the OHI, you know, if that's going to be done anyway, we don't need to make it as a next step, but, you know, that is something that.
How about if we would provide a timeline for the work this year, like when we will know?
Okay, so staff to provide a timeline about organizational health, is that?
Right.
Yeah, great.
Because then you'll, you'll be telling, you'll know then when the second survey will be administered, et cetera.
Perfect.
Are we good to rock and roll?
Okay, thanks Kathy for.
Wait, I got to have the vote, I'm so sorry. Okay, so the motion on the table is to move to accept the Human Resources Operational Expectations Monitoring Report. All those in favor of the motion? Okay, I have Velkoff, Hines, Reed, Stork, Evans, Darrenet Kofax, Strauss, Moon, McElveen Smith, all those opposed, all those abstaining, Schultz. Motion passes.
Okay, we now have eight minutes to do the community stakeholders monitoring report. Okay. Yes, so Pat is going to make our motion for this. Go ahead, Pat.
Yes, thank you. I move to accept the treatment of community stakeholders operational expectations monitoring report.
Is there a second? Thank you, Patty. Okay, so Marty is going to do a very quick presentation and we're going to have to limit comments to get back on track. So with this presentation, just to be clear, Marty's going to go through it and then at the end, he's going to leave a little time, I guess a minute, to discuss the organizational changes in the department, yes. Pat made the motion, Patty seconded. Okay, thanks Marty.
Okay, good morning, everyone. So, at the beginning of the school, school year, I didn't expect that I would be sitting in this seat giving an OE report, but here I am, and I'm here, I have to thank my team for pulling this report together. We've got Kathleen Thomas, who is our coordinator for Strategic Communications, we have Jay Garant, who is our coordinator for Business and Community Partnerships, we have John Torrey, who is our Public Information Officer, and we have Daryl Craig, who is our coordinator for Family and School Partnerships. We also have Pam, or Gail Holloman, who is not here with us today, who was our program manager for the Parent Resource Center. It was that team who pulled this report together, so thank you. Today, I know I have a short amount of time, but I want to direct you, let's see if we're, I don't think we're up yet, we'll be up here in just a moment. There we are. I want to direct you to this year's operational expectations for DCCO. As you can see, all of our areas, except for one, are green, and so we're very proud of that in DCCO. Now, I want to take you through our measures and highlight some of the areas where we've seen increases over last year. The first being measure number 1.1, which is participation in maintaining an open, responsive and welcoming environment. When you look at this particular measure, and we've seen a 56% increase over last year with 28,000 participants, 28,800 participants versus the 45, 42, 508 participants. And those individuals who've taken advantage of our programs through our Family and School Partnership Team and our Parent Resource Center. These are those direct interactions where we provide training for parent liaisons, training for our community liaisons, and then those direct interactions that those individuals have. Now, it doesn't recognize those direct interactions that parent liaisons have with our community on a regular basis, but it does give you a sense of the number of stakeholders that we are able to actually have an impact on in Fairfax County through these particular programs. And again, those programs would be through parent liaisons, community liaisons, our multicultural panels, and of course, the Parent Resource Center. Measure number 1.2 focuses on those major community engagement activities, and earlier this year, I was at the table and I talked about our education summit. I'd like to highlight one piece of that. There were some questions about our education summit. If you remember, we had lots of positives about our education summit from those who actually participated through those surveys. As a reminder, we had 400 participants at our education summit. In Appendix A of the report, you'll find, because there was a question about where did those 400 participants come from? Which schools did they attend? And so we have attached that information in Appendix A. We also had a question about the percentage, the numbers of individuals who responded affirmatively on the survey, and we had 85 of those 400 participants responded on that particular survey, which was about a 21% response rate. And so, there was a question about that, so we wanted to provide that information to the board. Measure 1.3 is a focus on the Trust and Confidence Survey that we provide our parents in Fairfax County on a yearly basis. And just to give you some information about that, we have, we survey 5,000 randomly selected parents and 150,000 non-parent taxpayers in the school system, or in Fairfax County. We actually use the library patron list for those non-parent taxpayers. And as you can see here, there are a few highlights that I want to point out within our Trust and Confidence Survey. As noted directly on the OE itself, you, you've seen, we see an increase with our parents around FCPS being a trustworthy public institution. We've gone, our parents have stayed consistent at 84%, but we've seen an increase with our non-parents from 65% to 67%. A few other areas that I would just like to highlight, that more parents and non-parents continue to agree with the statement that school system leaders make decisions that reflect the community's values, and that's up from 70% among parents last year to 72%. And we've seen an increase among those non-parents from 47% to 50% this year. Also, there remains a strong belief by parents, and that's 82%, and non-parents, 58%, that FCPS is providing students with the right education for the 21st century. Some other things that we found that are consistent with previous surveys is that parents trust three areas for getting their news from, about Fairfax County schools. The first are those keep-in-touch messages and all official information and communications that we provide. Parents also trust their local schools and they, they trust their teachers, they trust those employees that are sharing information about the school district. For our non-parents, some of the top areas, the top area is the Washington Post, where 39% of those non-parent taxpayers say that the Washington Post is their most trusted source of information, next being 36% with family and friends, and then those official FCPS communications with 32%. Measure number 1.4, I'm sorry, we're going on to 1.5 and 1.6. 1.5 is focused on the balance of news coverage. It's highlighted in your report, when we look at the balance of news coverage in Fairfax County, we had some major news stories, we saw a slight decrease in that balance of those news stories. We look at balance as being whether or not the news story has provided not only the reporters' focus, but if there's been input from Fairfax County Public Schools as well. And we can see that of the news articles on major issues, we had 41 balanced news stories this year. And while that has decreased a bit, it's still a very high number. With measure number 1.6, this is the area where we see yellow, and we see that yellow because we're shooting at a target of 100% of our schools having at least one business partner. And as you can see, while we've increased over the previous year from 71% to 75.5%, it's not exactly where we'd like to be. We have some opportunities, just thinking back to last week's breakfast with our faith-based community, we're already seeing opportunities to increase those partnerships with our schools. For this particular measure, you can see that 149 of our 196 schools have at least one business partnership, and we also have 10 departments within our offices that have partnerships with one or more business or community organization. Also, within measure 1.6, you can see that we have created 29 new official partnerships this year. Moving on to measure 2.1, oh, I, I need to go back, I'm sorry, to measure 1.6. While we look at those partnerships that we have with our community, we gain so much more than just monetary support through those partnerships, but another aspect of that particular office, of our Business and Community Partnership Office, is related to those donations that we receive from the community. And we've received some significant donations from the community, and this is noted on page 11 of your, your report, that we've received close to a half a million dollars in donations for individual schools and to Fairfax County Public Schools in terms of significant donations from our business partners. And so that's something that we certainly wanted to share with the board. If you move on to Area 2 under efficiency, measure 2.1, we talk about the timeliness of responses to FOIA and FCPS inquiries. And last year, there were some questions about our, the FOIAs and the FOIAs that we receive in Fairfax County. I just have to say that it's very warm. I just have to say that it's very warm up here, and so those who are along the side, we're freezing along the side, but it feels good to actually be right here. So, yeah, so I'm actually very happy to be in the hot seat. We were, we were a bit cold along the side over there. So it feels good. With those FOIA requests, we were up 13% over last year. And just to give you a sense of those FOIA requests, we have two full-time employees who are fielding those FOIA requests on a daily basis. Since I've come into this particular position as Chief of Staff, I review those FOIA requests. I get a report every Monday that shows, you know, the types of requests that our community is asking, and they're extremely complex. It takes a lot of staff time. We were talking about, you know, that burden on staff. It takes a lot of staff time to compile those requests, not just from the individuals who are answering the requests, but they then get their information from departments. And so we have multiple requests at any given time going out. And so with 332 up from 294, you can see in the report that we had 174 single requests, but we had 158 multiple requests from only 35 individuals. So you can get a sense of, you know, those frequent flyers who are asking lots of information, asking for lots of information about Fairfax County Public Schools.
Mr. Smith, will you repeat that, please? I was distracted for a moment.
Certainly. So we had, of the 332 requests, 174 of those were single requests, 158 of those were multiple requests from only 35 individuals.
Thank you.
And there is a chart within the Operational Expectation Report that explains, we've identified those requesters with letters, and you can see which individuals have requested the And then lastly, I want to point your attention to our Customer Satisfaction portion of the report, and Measure 3.2, which is about our internal stakeholder satisfaction with communications and community outreach services. We're very proud about this number. This is a survey that we send annually to our departments. And as you can see, we've had an increase from last year. Last year, we had an overall score of 2.75 on a four-point scale. This year, we have an overall average of 3.1 on a four-point scale. And with two of the highest rated areas were DCCO providing employees with the latest news, programs, and activities of the School Division through newsletters, Intranet, and the public website, with 96% of those administrators very satisfied with our responsiveness and accuracy. Along with 93% of those responding administrators who are very satisfied with our communication advice and the counsel that we provide to schools. And a lot of that counsel that we provide to schools, it comes from the entire department, but it mainly comes through our Public Information Officer, who works, you know, very closely with schools around crisis information, providing information, providing support for those day-to-day emergencies that arise where we have to communicate that information to our school communities. Our principals are very grateful for that support. So at that, I'm going to end our presentation. There are some areas, going back to the staff and how they compiled this report, it's a very direct report, and so there are some areas under Initiatives Completed and Initiatives in Progress that if you, after reviewing, you may have questions, but I won't necessarily go through those, because I think that it will be more interesting to hear about, you know, the next phase for DCCO and how we're going to move forward.
Great, thank you, Marty. And so we have, I'm going to limit people to about two minutes per question. And just a reminder, after we do questions, Marty's going to talk a little bit about the reorganization, so don't, please don't address those in your questions. So first, we have Ted, followed by Elizabeth.
So really quick, the breakdown of the educational summit in Appendix A by school, elementary school, I think it'd be really great if that could be shown as a map of the county by elementary school. I think what people are looking for is kind of to be able to visualize where folks are coming from.
Yeah, it's not just elementary, though.
Okay, whatever. Yeah.
We can provide that.
Yeah.
Okay, we have that as the next step. Elizabeth?
First of all, I want to say that, to my colleagues, we know that this is our Achilles heel, and to short shrift this report and the work and the conversation, I think is a mistake. This is, I think, where we need to be spending a lot of time. On the half million that you quoted in terms of significant donations, I'm looking at the sub-report where it says partnerships or sponsorships. Are those the, is that, I don't see in-kind. So have you tabulated anywhere what in-kind or non-cash contributions are? Because that's equally significant. That's one question. And then two, with this that's up here right now, this customer satisfaction, I've never liked this. I mean, we, I don't know how any of my colleagues feel. I guess this is a conversation we can have at some point. Somehow, it doesn't capture what we do or how we relate or engage the public. It's customer satisfaction. I don't think of us as having customers, per se. But similarly to the previous report, Marty, I'm wondering if we have raw numbers for the outcomes of these surveys, because again, it's all a roll-up. But, you know, tangibly, how many people participate in these and what, what's the raw number would be helpful.
So I can certainly get you those raw numbers. I don't know exactly what those are, but I can get those for the board. With regard to the in-kind with our business partnerships and those donations, I'll let Jay Grant answer those questions.
Thank you. In regards to in-kind donations, there are only a few that I can actually tabulate on my own, and that's because they're the ones I know about. For instance, in Collect for Kids, the support from George Mason University on our award ceremony, and then, there's one other big one. Oh, Innolance, a company that we partnered with to help us build the Collect for Kids website. Those are some areas where I can actually tabulate the in-kind donation based on the federal number for what a volunteer hour is worth.
But Jay, when I'm looking at, when I'm looking at the sub-report, there's a whole category that lists, it says both significant donations, and then some of it says monetary, but it doesn't say necessarily monetary for the others. And then underneath it has sponsorships. So is that in-kind, or is that my, I mean, what is that?
Well, I don't know what you have in front of you, because I have some with an asterix. So I can tell you which ones have actual dollar figures as opposed to those where we include the time of volunteers. Most of the sponsorship is a hard donation calculation. We can, we can look at how much they've given within a check form, or, for instance, with Innolance, I contacted the company and said, can you give us a dollar figure based on how many hours your staff took to build the website?
Okay, thanks. So moving on to Tammy.
Thank you. I see back there, the same area, 1.6, number of partners for each school. I realize we're at 75%. I think that's great. I do want to commend Jay, you're up there now, so that's good. I do want to commend Jay Grant for all the work that he does. I do believe he's an excellent one-man band, but I do believe that, since that area is an area where we're talking about it, I think the reality is, is if we can grow business partners in each of our schools and grow that area significantly, I think we need to look, when we look at the reorganization, Marty, talk about how that area can expand, talk about different ways. I think that's important for us to look at. And I just want to mention that, because I've seen various times during my tenure in the board, you know, not really, you know, we've missed something, and it's not because of staffing efficiencies, it's simply because of the breadth of work that it requires to look at partnerships in each of our schools and to build those. So I really think that's an area that we need to look at as we move forward, and in the reorganization has to be talked about, and I see you have a comment.
Well, we were actually talking about the same thing, and Marty and I have talked about it quite a bit, I think Jay and I also discussed it, is there are systems out there that we could, we could do a better job of capturing volunteer hours at schools and/or departments, other donations that we might not be, might not know about from a division perspective. So down the road, I think it's something we're going to have to consider, but we need to understand also that would add to people's plates out there, because we would, someone's got to capture it somewhere.
Right.
You know, and that's the only way you can quantify it. So, but I do think it's worthy of a conversation. I just don't know how much time it would take for folks to actually complete it, but I do think it would be valuable for us to be able to quantify it in a better way.
I do. I think it's important, and I think, you know, I think we've done a good job over the last two years, but talking to, you know, the Board of Supervisors and realizing how many areas of the social services realm we are in with partners with our community. I, you know, not official partners, but in some ways. And I think it's important that we quantify it, and I also think it's important that as we grow the business partnership, we look at ways of restructuring that area and adding to the strength of that area. So thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tammy. Pat?
Thank you. Just a few questions, and I'll ask them and then let you answer, if that's okay? Sure. All right. Of the non-parent respondents on the surveys, and I think, I think I've seen this, but I thought we might just put it in the record today, we do see lower numbers oftentimes for the non-parent respondents, but I think I've seen that that's because they don't have the same information. So a lot, you'll get more sort of I-don't-know kind of answers from that part of the community. Okay, I just wanted to check on that. On the business partners, it is an equity issue, which I think is why we watch it. And a couple of things, what Tammy was saying, I do think that board members could probably be more active in that search than we are. And I think that's why Public Engagement Committee has been looking at the faith community and trying to reach out to the Chamber of Commerce and helping board members to be more proactive in that. But I also had a thought, in places where we have sort of an embarrassment of riches, like TJ, for example, where we, I think they have several business partners, I wonder if we could, if we have thought about sort of sister school arrangements or something like that, so that a business partner has TJ and another school, or Langley and another school, I don't know. And then last, on FOIAs, I'm wondering if there's anything that school board members could do to help if you see trends, because I feel like when a hundred mill, a constituent of mine makes a FOIA request, I think in the back of my mind, ooh, did I miss an opportunity to, to talk to this constituent and solve their problem before it came as a FOIA? So I don't know if you have that kind of information, but it might be helpful.
So with FOIAs, it's interesting, because you can either, when we think about communications, you can over-communicate to try to help, you know, fend off or at least be proactive with providing that information. But sometimes, that additional information can then cause those stakeholders then have more questions about the information that you've provided. So it's, it's difficult to, to really get a handle on that.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Next, we have Patty, followed by Illyang.
Well, I'll start with, thank you, by the way, for all this information. I'll start with the same comments I made on the last one, and that is, my observation is this is a lot of work to put together by all the staff involved, and it's a lot of information. And I'm hopeful that in the governance discussion, we can talk a little bit about focus and what's really important for the board to, you know, receive information about, as well as a direction for the, for the organization itself regarding communications. But I want to focus on the Trust and Confidence Survey, and really just, it's not a question so much as a comment, and kind of following up a little bit on what Pat was saying. Going back through some of the percentages, it seems to me that there's, it's kind of speaking to us that there's areas we need to work on. And I guess I wonder if, in fact, we have specific strategies to address certain things, like, FCPS manages the budget responsibly. 55% of parents agreed with that, and only 40% of non-parents. To me, that says we've got a little more work to do, either in, you know, sharing our decision-making or, or something, because that, that's not too good. Another one, FCPS makes decisions that reflect community values. 70% of parents, 50% of non-parents. And the same percentages for, we operate in the best interests of all and fair for all. So again, those just may be perceptions, and, you know, that may not, may or may not reflect reality, but it almost doesn't matter, because those are people's perceptions. And the last one is, FCPS has made progress in the three student achievement goals right over there. 60% of parents agreed and 40% of non-parents. So to me, if those are the feelings of the community, to me, those are areas that we should be focusing in. I guess, just a quick question, is, is that something that we have tried to embrace and develop strategies for yet, or is that going to be part of the strategic plan, or, or don't you know?
So whether or not it's going to be a part of the strategic plan, yes, most definitely. I am not aware of how we've used the information from the Trust and Confidence Survey in the past, after just coming into this position. But I do know that there are areas that have impacted, when we think about the communications plan for the budget this year, and it's a very proactive approach to providing information about our long-term approach, the long-term strategy. We've thought about, you know, what this particular document says about our trustworthiness around the budget. And so we will be taking parts of that survey and using those pieces as we develop those communications plans for other issues in Fairfax County. Most importantly, the budget.
Okay, thanks, Patty. Next, Illyang, then Kathy.
I have a quick question regarding the expenses on our part in complying with a FOIA request. You say that you have two full-time staff members working on them. I know that it's not just to those two staff members, as you stated, because they have to, you know, get in touch with a lot of other staff members in various departments to collect the information and then, and then collect them and then provide them to the requester. But I also know that we can charge to a certain extent. Could you quantify as to what percentage of the total expenses are recouped from those requesters? Is that 10%, 5%, or you can't even tell that?
So I've asked John Torrey to come to the table.
Well, as you know, the law provides for us to charge the fee, but we take a very conservative approach in assessing fees. If it's, if it's a complex, very detailed request, you know, we'll compile a fee that we can charge the person making the request, but it's a very conservative approach. We were not, we certainly aren't overcharging, and we're not in the business of, the law doesn't allow for us to make it a profit center. I mean, it's simply, you know, recouping our costs for retrieving that information.
And depending upon the organization, there are some news organizations that ask for information. If other large divisions have given that information at no cost, then we'll provide that same information at no cost. And again, there are some individuals who ask, or some organizations that ask, and when they receive the cost for the entire request, they'll scale back their request based on those costs.
We do provide estimates usually ahead of time, if it exceeds $200.
But can you, can you, can you tell us, you know, percentage of the expenses we're able to recoup? Is that, is that, I know that, you know, complying with a request is a government service, so we may not, you should not expect to recoup all our expenses, but whether we are recouping bare minimum 1%, 10%, or half of it, just I want to get a sense of that.
I think we'll have to get back to Mr. Moon on that. So essentially, I think what you're asking, Mr. Moon, is for us to, how much money do we collect for this purpose, and how much is our overall cost just with regard to the department? I think we can easily do that. Thank you.
We can get that information for you.
Okay, I have that as the next step. Kathy is going to be finishing us off.
I think it's a positive report. I think we've made changes over time to get information out to the community, especially with putting the information in the Washington Post. So you see more people are aware of what we're doing as a system. I think it is a little bit difficult for the board to see it, though, when you just report out the number of people that agreed or didn't, the people that agreed. The percentage might look low, but what's missing is the number of people that didn't feel like they had enough information. You know, there's a lot of community members out there that we might survey that don't have that much context. So, so having that context with it, it does, so you get a sense of, all right, only 40% said they agreed with that, but, you know, 40% didn't have enough information. So that context, right.
And so that does drive the internal work of DCCO and how they provide outreach, and so we're expanding social media, our presence with social media, and looking at different ways to engage the community. So I do know that internally, DCCO does use the survey to try to be innovative with their approach.
And I've seen changes over time, and I think that's positive. The other piece, I want to follow on with what Patty said, looking at some of the things from the survey, especially around budget. I think some of those things are things that the board will have to discuss as we move forward and do stuff and not put it all on staff, to say, wherein of this do you think we think we can wherein of this do you think, we think we can control and message on some of it. Thank you.
Okay, Dan?
Mine is on business partnerships, and I want to start by just saying that we've come a long way. I think the streamlining of the business partnership process and our, and our system for doing that is huge, a huge improvement over what we had. And I think, but it only really starts us on the process. We have now, I think, a platform to work off of. So I'm trying to get an idea of what kind of increase you've seen in the last year with the new online model. Have we seen that getting used? Is it something that schools in particular are using to kind of get out to the community and use that as an interface? Or is it still on a kind of, on occasion basis, some schools do it, other schools don't do it, they just don't know how to use it? I mean, what's the issue there? How do we improve that result?
So what, what Dan's talking about is the FCPS Partnership Starter, which is our matching tool. And I don't know if the board knows this, but beginning last, at the start of the school year, we hired a senior fellow volunteer. So hired is a strong term. And her name is Stacy Yike. She's a former colonel in the Air Force who decided to volunteer with us 20 hours. So she's helped us work on what that baseline is. My operational expectation for next year changes, or I hope it's an add-on, actually, not a change. So I'd like to keep the existing operational expectation and add-on that we're going to get two partners for every school with 40% poverty or greater. Right. So we, we've now discovered what that baseline is, and we've begun to work on that baseline already. Last year, we had 29 partnerships with official agreements signed by the superintendent and partner. This year, we're already at 22, and the queue will get us probably over 40 for next year. But I don't just attribute it to the tool, Dan, because we also streamlined the process by which you can get a partnership through the official process. Additionally, we built a lot of templates for common areas of partnering, mentoring, tutoring, giving programs, so that when somebody completes that agreement, they can cut and paste elements in. So that's helped the process. So I'm not really exactly sure why. But to the point of the Partnership Starter, Tracy Nguyen, who's in the room, is helping put together a marketing campaign for the public. So one of the things that Stacy Yike, our volunteer, has done is reached out to all of the schools that had not completed the Partnership Starter, especially those in the 40% or plus poverty rate, to make sure that they're in the portal. And beginning January 15th, I think, is our date, we're going to begin to push out to the public and business and community groups to use that, that tool.
I'm obviously very, very excited. We've come a long way in the last year and a half, and I'm extremely pleased with how far we've come. I know we have a long way to go, and that's part of why I wanted to mention it. The other part of this, and I know that this may somewhat confuse the issue, and that's not my intent, but it is, the two I see go hand in hand, which is the partnerships and then increasing and getting more community volunteers in our schools to do supports in our schools, because the one ties in the other. If we can get them in the school, they see the need, they then become a partner in one way or another, either individually or collectively through the company that they work with. Do you all, have you all looked at that, and do you all consider that as part of how you are designing this rollout, and the January 15th rollout? Is that somehow tied to that as well?
We've thought a lot about it, and had a committee develop the content for a tool that we've called Teach Force FCPS, where teachers and the workforce connect, but getting something like that built is a challenge. My office has a pay-band five hourly staff member, and I'm on my sixth and seventh years. The current one just told me last week she's leaving, so.
Well, I have a third of a person that works with me.
There's a lot, there's a lot of turnover and challenge there.
Okay, thanks, Dan. I'm going to ask Marty just to do briefly the organizational changes, and then we will do next steps, okay?
Certainly. So this past year, we know that our previous assistant superintendent for the Department of Communications, Community Outreach, took a position with Alexandria City Public Schools. And in having a conversation with Dr. Garza, Dr. Garza felt that this was an opportune time to take a look at how our programs were aligned within that, this particular department. So rather than looking at this as a reorganization, I like to think of it as a realignment, realigning those different programs that perhaps have a better relationship with different departments here in Fairfax County. And so as we look at that realignment, we would be taking the Family and School Partnership team and realigning their work within the Department of Instructional Services. And, and both of these programs that I'm talking about will move into Special Services and Instructional Services, working with the, the offices of Operations and Strategic Planning. And so looking at Family and School Partnerships, going to ISD, looking at the Parent Resource Center, which there is a strong component for Special Services within the Parent Resource Center, moving to the Department of Special Services, and then changing the name, since we would no longer have a Department of Communications and Community Outreach, it would then become an Office of Communication and Community Relations, much like we had in the past, and that would be in the superintendent's office. The responsibilities of those individuals within the office wouldn't change, and then we would be hiring an executive director, level two, for that position. It would not be a leadership team position, yet it would be a position that supports the leadership team, the superintendent's office, and the school board.
Okay, thanks.
May I add two things? Technically, no one has to physically move for this all to occur. Everyone remains in their same position. It's, it's just the reporting structure changes. And I think there's a lot more synergies that can be created, because there's a lot, a lot of family outreach in these departments already occurring. So there's opportunity, I think, for some additional collaboration and, and work. The other thing I would point out, that this position, I think, will attract some high-quality folks to this position, and they would attend cabinet and LT, cabinet at the beginning of every cabinet meeting, and LT as, as needed. So I'm excited. I think we'll have some really strong candidates for this position.
Okay, Dan, really quick.
I'm just, where does the, where does the volunteer portion of this fit into the changes that you're making? We have efforts to get volunteers in school, and I realize that we have a parent, the parent education office is somewhat different, but it's also has an influence on that process.
So as we look at volunteers, those come directly through the schools. And so if you can be a little bit more clear about whether or not we have a division-wide focus on, on bringing volunteers into the system.
Changing the Family and School Partnership, changing, changing the particular, I don't, no, I won't get the terminology right, to change this particular office that provides classes and support. How do they, is, what does that do, or how does that affect any of the volunteer?
So with this, if you think about this realigning, we're not changing, you know, the particular focus of these programs. So Family and School Partnerships will remain the same as it is today, and as Dr. Garza said, there'll just be a different reporting structure. So with, within this realignment, we haven't cut any positions, we haven't cut any of the functions of these particular programs. We're only moving them. So everything that's happening currently will remain in toto as we move them to different departments.
So maybe the question is, where does the volunteer portion of this fit now?
It, it remains with Family and School Partnerships. And then that-
And then the community piece, which will be Community Business Partnerships, Jay Grant, would remain in that office, remain in communications.
Yes.
Okay, is that good, Dan?
Okay.
Okay.
I have to think about it.
Pam, can we pull up the next steps? Okay, so first, we had Ted, who requested a map of the partnerships. Yeah, the-
Oh. The Ed Summit attendees, and we can get that map.
Okay. Okay, where are we? Yes, okay, we have that up there. Provide numbers on how many responded to the Trust and Confidence Survey. Elizabeth requested that. Provide information on the approximate cost of providing a response to a FOIA request, and the amount of funds collected from those requesters. That's all I had on my list. Anything else? Okay, we're good to go. Right now, we're going to move to governance. Oh, we have to vote on the monitoring report, sorry. Okay. Yeah, so the motion was to move to accept the treatment of community stakeholders' operational expectations monitoring report made by Pat, seconded by Patty. All those in favor? Okay, that is unanimous with Ms. Schultz away from the table and Ms. McLaughlin absent. Okay, we need a two-minute break, so we will begin again in 1:03.
What's the pleasure of the board? Do you want to take lunch now, or do you want to, I mean, you know, we're, we're behind, we're going to be behind. Do you want to take a 20-minute lunch and come back? Okay.
No, I would think, I think we should take a lunch break.
All right, let's take our lunch and be back.
Okay, 1:30 for return.